Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting on Thursday, May 9th, 2024. In attendance, we have Denise, we have Kevin, we have Roger, myself, and I believe we have Alec on Zoom.
I'm here.
All right. All right, thank you, Alec. So as always, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, right after that, we'll start with the appointments and resignations. We have the resignation of Don. I don't want to butcher the name, I apologize, Mchenzi, from the Founder's Day Committee. Anything to say on that? And the reappointment of Michael Unis to the MFN Regional Wastewater District. And then he can vote there.
Yes.
So I will take a motion to reappoint Michael Unis to the MFN Regional Wastewater District.
Second.
Motion in a second. And because Alex is on Zoom, we're gonna have to roll call it. So Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay, and we have another resignation of Melissa Nizalek from the Open Space Committee. And we do have an appointment to the 2024-2025 Circuit Commission as a Commission Member for representing the Select Board. I've served on it as a planning board, I know recently, it was, what was it, Sandy O'Hare?
Yep.
She said she didn't want to. I know Kevin reached out, he would like to be appointed to that. I'm always a fan of somebody from the Select Board doing it, so you have my blessing.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Were there just, were there anybody else that was interested?
There wasn't. And Sandy obviously liked doing the work, but just with her schedule and everything, it became top priority, so she couldn't do anything more.
Make a motion to reappoint Kevin Snyder to the Circuit Commission.
A second.
All right, motion in a second. Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask a question for Mike? The, will they reach out to me? Do I need to reach out to them? Like, how does that work?
They'll reach out to you, I'll give them your, all your contact information.
Okay.
And that's, I think a form we have to sign too here. Where are you up to signing?
Yeah, I saw the other one.
You have to sign it. Okay, now in the minutes, did everybody get a chance to read the April 25th, 2024 So if there's any changes, corrections, I'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 25th, 2024. Second.
All right, motion in a second. Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay, moving on to licenses and permits. We have a vote to approve a one-day beer and wine license to Mark Hasselbarth for a private event at the Watson Fine Arts Chase Dining Hall, Diane Davis Spencer Cafe, and Mary Lyon Hall of Wheaton College, 26 East Main Street in Norton, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Friday, May 17th, 2024, for commencement. I think Mark is here, if anybody has questions, or...
Or if you all want to go over kind of each event.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you all.
That's it, we have another one for you.
We came all the way down, right? Might as well stand.
Check out the new spread. Yeah, so graduation is upon us, I feel like January was last week. So Friday, we kick off with an arts reception, that's outside the Fine Arts Building, Watson Fine Arts Building, from 4:00 to 7:30 for roughly 300 to 400 people that will stop by during that time, serving just beer and wine. Then the rest of the events are dinners, Chase Dining Hall is gonna have a traditional lobster bake, I remember it around that night, bringing that back, so lobster bake. Mary Lyons will have the 50th class dinner. Davis Spencer will have the 60-person trustee dinner. And I think that was it. Is there one more? Friday?
I think that was it. Just the two of you?
Yep.
And I know you have some floor plans, I promise we're working on better ones.
Me either.
I don't believe, that wasn't me, by the way. And the other ones from two years ago, I panicked, because Jen was like, you need to get these in 40 hours, which I apologize for.
I'm pretty sure we'd seem worse.
So this came up in our meeting this morning, and we had a good laugh about it, but they were also promised to have that by the end of the week, so actual 40. And then Saturday is just some more dinners in the same buildings.
And the mayor will be there, as always.
You better be. I'm hungry.
Anybody have any questions? No, Alec, I don't need to figure that out, but if you have a question, you can always chime in.
Gotcha, thank you, Steve.
All right.
Since your packets were sent out, they have received all the sign-offs.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, just a quick question for Mark.
Are the Select Board members invited to the lobster bake?
Ask them.
And the other mayor?
That's a perfect question. And the mayor and all?
Absolutely. The best part for me is the ice cream sundae bar after.
I'm looking at Jack's ice cream right now.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I will make a motion to approve the one-day beer and wine license to Mark Hasselbarth for a private event in the Watson Fine Arts Chase Dining Hall, Diane Davis Spencer Cafe, and Mary Lyon Hall of Wheaton College, 26 East Main Street, Norton, Mass, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Friday, May 17th, 2024, for commencement. And to approve the one-day beer and wine license to Mark Hasselbarth for a private event in Pine Hall, Chase Dining Hall, and Mary Lyon Hall of Wheaton College, 26 East Main Street, Norton, Mass, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday, May 18th, 2024, for commencement.
A second.
I have a motion in a second, and I thank you to Kevin for not making me read all that at 8:00. Okay, Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for your time. We'll see you on Friday.
See you next Friday.
See you next Friday. Okay, now we're on to announcements.
So we have several events going on at the Norton Park and Rec, beginning May 17th through July 26th, on Fridays, from 6:30 to 8:30, is an over 21 pickup lead for Kickball. Anyone who's interested, they can contact the Norton Park and Rec Town Hall. Also, we have kids swim lessons at the town pool, it's gonna be open. They have four different sessions, each session is two weeks, on Mondays through Thursdays, $125 per session. Different levels of swimmers, level one and two are nine, level three and four are 10. Adults and me swimmers are at $11.50. To register, go to Norton Park and Rec, NortonMass.org/parkandrecs/patriots/24swimlessons. And you also can get, Norton residents can get a 2024 season pass for the pool. Individual passes are $75, family passes are $100. Norton residents are individual $100 and family $125. If you purchase your season pass before June 7th, you get a 10% discount. You can contact the Norton Park and Rec Department.
All right, and there's one more announcement that I'm gonna do. I guess over the past weekend, Brian Beatty of B&amp;B Landscape donated mulch for the landscaping of the police department. After the mulch arrived, Gary Cameron, David Dumont, Bob Kimble, Roger Marsan, and Adam Marsan took the time out of their day to spread the mulch in preparation of National Peace Officers Memorial Day on May 15th. They went above and beyond to assist with this project. This is really not new to them, as they've been involved in many community projects, including but not limited to the food drive and toy drives. I should have said, this is from Hugh Clark. If you would like to recognize them for their outstanding service they provided to the police department, and also ask the Select Board to formally accept the donation by Mr. Beatty. So that, that's later in the agenda, right? To accept it, okay. All right, excellent. All right, now we're on to new business. I put this first one on here, the discussion of rules of order with regard to meetings. Not to have a major discussion on it, just to kind of clarify a couple of quick things. I know in the past several years, meetings have been kind of seemingly sometimes free-for-all, sometimes orderly. I want to make sure everybody that comes in the audience has a voice and gets to come up and speak on almost any topic that we have on here. Similar to public hearings, though, once the public has come up and spoken, I don't think that people should be debating with the Board when we're deliberating on things. It's part of the rules of order, so I just wanted to make that clear, because there wasn't questions about that last meeting. Okay, and now, does anybody have any questions on that? Okay. And I will, I mean, I'm not sure yet, but I know in years past, they had a specific section on the agenda for public comment, and I think, I think that's a great idea, and I'd like to bring that back if everybody's okay with that. I think the more the public can talk to us, the better.
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah.
And you can help me if, if you have a public comment period, I suggest that you limit how long someone talks, and you can't discuss an issue with them that they bring up at the meeting that's not on the agenda. So you can take it under advisement, and you can put it on a future agenda, but if it's not on your agenda, you can't discuss and talk about it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mike. So I'm now going to vote to accept the mulch donation from B&amp;B Landscape.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. President?
I will make a motion to vote to accept the mulch donation from B&amp;B Landscaping and recognition of community assistance for landscaping at the town police department. And I just would like to add my thank you to everyone, including Mr. Marsan, who did that, that's great stuff, so.
That was very nice, too.
Thank you. I did have a technical question.
Sure.
Does it make sense to accept it and spread it, and kind of accept it?
I think we have to officially accept it.
Okay.
Yeah, as a kind, yeah.
Okay. A second.
Okay, motion in a second. Denise?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Alec?
Yes.
And I am a yes, and thank you all again for that. Okay, next up, we have the recognition of the Norton Police Honor Guard's First Place Award for the police honor guard in the Aquamanek Island National Police Parade. So again, this is from Hugh Clark, from the other day. The Norton Police Honor Guard participated in the Aquamanek Police Parade in Newport, Rhode Island. The parade members remembers fallen officers over the past year. The honor guard receives the first place award for a police honor guard, which is fantastic. Honor guard members were led by Sergeant James Cameron and included Sergeant Jacob Dennett, Charles Tercoot, along with patrol officers Nicholas Precourt, Jared Morse, and Jesse Anderson. So congratulations, that's fantastic.
Great job.
All right, so we got an easy one next. Discussion, vote, and/or revote on town meeting logistics and special town elections. So I'm guessing there's nobody that wants to say anything on that. All right, Mr. Town Mayor, do you want to start?
Well...
Oh, wait, we do have, if you come with your ice cream, I fly through these meetings.
I'll watch it before it melts.
I'll watch it for you, Jack.
Cozy creation.
Put it right here. Denise and I will watch.
My fudge and caramel.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing?
Good.
Mike, you want to talk?
Sure. Okay, I'll start. So I just want to let everyone know that we did, we have been having discussions, and that obviously, next Monday, we don't feel that we're ready to hold a town meeting with all the logistics that need to be put in place. And so Jack has put a notice out, we've put it on the town website, we will send out an alert tomorrow, and then send it out again Sunday, so that people know that Jack will be going there Monday with you, you're going, right? And the town clerk to open and continue the town meeting. And I know Jack has indicated that you were looking to continue it to May 28th, Tuesday, because the 27th is a memorial day, so that would be 14 days because of the holidays.
And that's the maximum, correct?
Yes, that is the maximum under law that the moderator can do on his own initiative. There isn't anything that prohibits him from doing that again if circumstances should require, but he obviously is under no obligation.
So, right now, with the gym, the auditorium, and the cafeteria, we can sit 2,100 people. So we will have to rent chairs, so as soon as Jack says the 28th is definite, then I will request that chair rentals, and the cable studio will line up the audiovisual company.
And it confirmed the school is available?
It is.
What about a room for the childcare? Because I know initially, the room was gonna be the cafeteria for childcare.
The library.
At the library? Okay.
Mr. Chair, just, we're talking about the high school?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
And we'll put a note out, a notice out, have to recancel this one, once Jack works on that Monday, next Monday, then we'll put a notice out again to people.
The school is still in session at that point, I believe, right? And what do we do if we're continuing it on through the next day? Are we gonna leave the rooms set up? Do we have to take the, rip down the rooms, and then we set them up again after school?
So what we're looking at, if we do town meeting on May 28th, we will do the budget. Will be one of the first things, hopefully, that we do that night. So if we don't finish town meeting on that night, and town meeting has to be continued to another date, we don't anticipate that we're gonna have 2,100 people show up the second night after.
If we get the budget.
If the budget's off, then theirs will use the auditorium like we usually do.
That's what I should think. Yeah, it's been great working with Mike, and Ray Cord, and Lucia, Jason Benjamin, Police Chief, Fire Chief, working collaboratively to try and handle this out. 28th is, as Mike and Lauren said, it's the furthest out we can go with that 14-day thing. We have AV, the parking can be resolved for, we can get chairs. I spoke with Lucia this evening before coming in, the ballots will be here in time, so I see green lights all the way down the tree, so if everyone's on board, I think we can set the 28th and go with it. And to make, personally, just to play devil's advocate, would it be, would it be, instead of, would it be easier to push it again to the following Sat-, that Saturday? I don't know what the date is. Just so we could start in the morning, and then if it ran long, that it wouldn't have to be split into two? So, would it be better, easier? Sure. My interpretation of the statute that Lauren provided is that it's based on inability to hold a meeting less than convenience. We have no back-and-forth vote. Wheaton has a 4,200-person capacity field that I absolutely think we should leverage in the future. If there's another one of these votes, we can kind of pre-plan that out, which I think would be just a much more seamless thing.
Absolutely. I was gonna say the Saturday before the 25th, which would be a Saturday as well.
There's something on the 25th.
Graduation.
Yeah, it might be something. Is it still more of the weekends?
Who's graduation? Wheaton is around that.
Wheaton, May 18th.
The high school graduation is not until the 30th.
High school graduation is the 30th?
Yes. It's the senior night, all night grad party, they'll be out by 5:00 in the morning.
Yep, senior night, all right, right, it's May 24th.
So just for the record, I knew the answer, I just want to make sure, I knew we would get, well, I'll get that question once we leave here, so I wanted to make sure it was out there for the public, so I knew. We did a lot of dates, May 18th is Wheaton's graduation, May 19th, they still have events, even though it's a Sunday. They use the Norton High School and Yale Parkin for overflow, so that really kind of handcuffs us there. The following week, it's weeknight, try to give as much time as possible, and you have Memorial Day weekend, and you have that 28th, because the furthest out we could get, everything seems to be one of you all.
Yeah, the 18th high school is a good track, me too.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Does it make sense to start at an earlier time on that Tuesday?
That's an excellent question, Kevin, and I'm hoping to, that conversation with the Board, I definitely think we should allow people to be registered earlier.
Yeah.
So whether we start at 6:00 or 7:00, that's probably a good question for Dr. O'Neil, if we can get in as early as 4 o'clock, or we need to wait till 5:00. I don't know what the setup is gonna look like. Or at least start register, and if the meeting starts at 7:00, tell people to come early and register, so that they can get going at 7:00. Yeah, that would make sense, good.
You could even start earlier, because it might be a, come on, big conversation.
Might take a little while. Big conversation. He might, he might be out at something.
So Mike and I can take that as an action to follow with Dr. O'Neil about how early we can get access to that space, and we can maybe start to fill out the auditorium first, knowing that that doesn't have any setup.
And logistically, how many people do you need? People are...
I would have to recruit for some assistant moderators, probably at least one per space, possibly more, depending on the size. I'm assuming we would be set up in the gym, because that's where the bulk of the people are going to be, maybe two for the auditorium, and two for the cafeteria.
Okay.
So if there's any volunteers up there, I'm sure you'll get some.
And the mayor will be there, and Tuesday, going to the basketball hall thing, and Spring Day, which is gonna be 12:30 to 5:30 p.m., so I'll be there just in time for the town meeting that's 7:00.
All right. Mr. Chair? If there's nothing else about logistics, right, this second?
Is there anything else on logistics?
Mr. Chair, just real quick, so we're looking at Tuesday?
The 28th.
May 20th.
Yeah.
And we'll, and the time is 10:18. Okay.
Yeah, and that'll be confirmed, what, probably Monday? If not before.
Try tomorrow.
But it needs to be done by Monday at 7:00, because we have to announce whether we're continuing to specific date, time, and location.
Okay, perfect.
Any other questions? We'll go back to the screen. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you very much.
Do you want to make a motion on that, from the, please?
Uh, no, because he...
He takes it, that's his whole thing. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to reconsider the vote for the special election taken on Fives Two at the last meeting for, that we set for the 8th of June. The whole purpose of that, when I made that motion, was to have that vote before we had town meeting, and since that's not gonna happen, I would like to reconsider that vote and revote on that.
Okay, so we would need a motion to reconsider from, I believe it's from whoever voted yes on it, right? So you would make the motion?
I'd make that motion.
Okay, so, so that's your motion, is there a second? If he's still on.
Yep.
Alec? I can second if you want, but... Okay, I'm gonna second, just, I think it's probably a technical issues, so I'll second the motion to reconsider. So, okay, so we'll roll call, Denise? This is to reconsider that vote.
Can we vote on it, or, I thought you said that only the yeses can vote.
No, that everyone can't vote.
Only, only the yes can reconsider.
We're just reconsidering.
This decision is just to reconsider.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Alec?
And I am a yes.
He's trying to talk.
I think he is, he's not muted.
He's coming on the screen, but his, we can't hear him.
There's no beep thing on the, but there's no...
Yeah, okay.
His mic turned off or something.
So we'll do it as a four-o then, at this point. Okay. So the motion to reconsider passes 4 to 0, so now we would... Yeah, so I guess we can discuss.
So, I would like to not have that even considered anymore. Like I said, the whole purpose of that was to try to have that election before we had the town meeting. I think once we go to town meeting, then people will have, they're gonna vote on whether it's the four, the six and a half, or the one percent. So to have only one election after that would make no sense, so I think we should have, whatever ballot we have after town meeting, we should have the four and the six and a half on.
Whatever's approved at town meeting.
Whatever is approved at town meeting. And I, and I don't think that we can really set a meeting now, because we don't know what's gonna be approved at town meeting yet, so.
I don't, Mr. Speaker, but just a technical question, because it has to do with the budget to be approved by July 1st. So you have that 35-day, so 35-day notice, you have to approve the ballot question 35 days before, whatever date you choose before July 1st, right? So I think, if we wait till after town meeting, we'll be within that 35-day window, and so we won't be able to do that.
So, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I spoke with Mr. Unis about this specifically the other day, and he said, so long as we pass the 1% budget, the election can be after the July 1st, and it would just take over as soon as we have the election.
Yes, it's not ideal, but it's also the less messy, I think, of the options.
Because there were, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There were a couple of scenarios that I ran through my head. If, let's say, the 6.5% gets approved at town meeting and the 4% doesn't, and then at the election, the 4% gets voted in and the 6.5 doesn't, it's gonna be a messy situation there. It doesn't just revert back to the 4% because that wasn't passed at town meeting.
Right, right. We'd have to have another town meeting.
Right, so that's why I think we should wait till after town meeting if we're gonna put both of them on the ballot.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, so the override portion, you can pass an override anytime you want, as long as you have the base budget in place by 7:01, then you're good.
So, yeah, so if town meeting was after 7:01, then we'd have a big problem. Yeah, so that's where the problem is coming.
So I would like to have a revote on that motion that I made back on the second.
So, so logistically, I think we have to, we have to vote to cancel that date on the 8th, and then, I think that's what we have to do, we're gonna vote for a future date, we can do that.
And we just have to...
So all we would have to technically do now, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is to just cancel that 8th date.
Mr. Chair, because you do a reconsideration, what's essentially before you is the vote that you took. So right now, on the table being discussed is the, is the May, the June date.
June.
And so you're essentially revoting that. So if you do want the June date, you vote yes, if you don't want the June date, you vote no, and that's how you get it.
Okay, so we'll do it, and the positive, which is always... So we would need, so I would take a motion to hold town meeting on June 8th?
Town election.
Town, I'm sorry.
It's already on the table, you don't even need to take another motion, it's right there. The motion that's pending is to hold the meeting on May, of June, of the election.
You don't have the June 8th?
Do we need a second?
You don't, because it's, it's literally, it just takes you back in time to right before you voted.
Okay, perfect. That makes it easier, so.
If you vote no, we're not having it.
If you, if you vote yes, then you want to keep it on the 8th, if you vote no, then you don't want to have it on the 8th.
That's right.
So we'll go through it. Denise?
No.
Kevin?
No.
Roger?
No.
Alec?
No.
And I will vote no.
We can hear you. He was, can I just?
Yeah.
Someone texted me and said, he seconded twice, but I can't listen to him here, but everyone else... but everyone else heard him.
So June 8th went off the table, right?
Correct.
June 8th is gone.
All right.
And we're going to wait till after town meeting to come up with an election date.
All right, so do we have any other business? All right, now we'll move on to the town managers report.
All right. I just wanted to give you an update on a grant award. Beth Rossi, who once again did a great job and received a grant of $27,000 under the Community Health Systems Foundation Grant. And this is to help out providing rides to people in emergencies that need rides, that can't get to a doctor, you know, an important visit. And she wanted me to emphasize it's emergency situations, like if people need to get a ride, they can call GATRA. This is for emergency situations, because they only have so much money. And it's been working out great and helping people. They've taken people to cancer appointments in Boston, and doctors' appointments at the VAs. So it's a great program. Also, we received a $20,000 grant for the Mass Housing Partnership, and this is to help fund work that SERPIT is doing, developing a plan for us for the MBTA Communities Law. So SERPIT will develop, work with the planning board, and develop the district in the bylaw and bring it to town, develop the town meeting article. This will be on the warrant in October, and then they'll also file with the state once everything is completed. Just updates on the 123 Norton-South Worcester Street intersection. So the engineers have filed the 75% submittal to the state. So this is scheduled to be on the, it is on the Transportation Improvement Plan for 2026, and they expect it to go out to bid in February or March of 2026. On that one, it's been a long time, but...
Did we have any luck on, I know the Traffic Safety Committee asked if we could add sidewalks to that without impacting the project itself and delaying it further? Was there any movement on that?
There isn't, there have to, it would have to be a new project.
Mr. Chair.
That's what I thought, yeah.
I was at that meeting when they were talking with SERPIT about that, and they said that if you tried to add it to that, it would stop, you'd have to stop all the work, right? So you'd be better off to try to make a separate one and then try to get the work done at the same time.
Yeah, that's why they were requiring separately. They didn't want to impact it, because the second they get in addition to it, they'll just push it right back in the queue.
We've been on this for at least five years, it seems. It's been a long time. Just on the vacancy on the school committee, we've received two letters of interest. So anyone that is interested, if they send in letters, I would hope that you could meet with the school committee on the 23rd. Their next meeting is the 23rd. So we'll put out a notice to let people know if it's interest, any registered voter in town that's interested in being on the school committee can send in a letter of interest until Monday, May 20th, or 30th.
Okay, and as of the 23rd, I talked to the chair of the school committee, and we're going to have a joint meeting on that purpose. So I'm sure we'll have our joint meeting and then go our separate ways and have our own meetings.
It's going to be May 23rd at 7:00.
I just wanted to mention as the select board has declared May 12th to 18th, National Police Week, and May 19th to 25th, Emergency Medical Services Week. So thank all those public safety people for what they do for us.
Absolutely appreciate it. All right, the select board report mail. I had one quick thing. Paul Ducefie is back, and he's already hit the ground running. He reached out to me as a part of the Norton Business Association, and he's looking to get a grant for helping us evil business people partner up and get resources with consultations, marketing, branding, things like that for all businesses in Norton. So hopefully that goes through, and I will keep everybody posted. But he's, I've said it 100 times, he's fantastic for this town.
Mr. Chair, can I just go back, to the town manager, can I just go back to the MBTA community stuff? So I don't know if you can answer this now, but like, where are we as far as, you know, complying with all the requirements? Because I know there were some dates we needed to hit in there, and all that kind of stuff. So if you could just give us an update of that.
Sure, yeah, we have met all our dates on things that we had to do along the way, and we have to have this done by the end of the calendar year. So that's why we're having it on the warrant in October.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, I just would like to say, I know many other communities have used the services from SERPIT, and it's worked out really well. They have a great relationship with the Attorney General's Office as well. One of the things that the Attorney General's Office has offered to do is to take a look at your bylaw before town meeting, before it gets put on the warrant. And so we would highly recommend taking advantage of that, because there's a lot of criteria you need to hit, and it's great for them to look at it first.
Excellent.
And just let me say, I'm glad Paul's back too, because now we don't have... I don't have to be on all those meetings with SERPIT, talking to the chairman of that now. We've had quite a few of them.
Lauren, do they target turnaround time for that review? Just to make sure it's not for...
For that AG. If we give them a heads up, then it's going to come, they'll figure out the time.
Perfect.
Okay, anything else? All right, I approve the warrant as written. And favorite part of the evening?